Good morning, everyone. Today is May 2nd. This is a special meeting of the Towns County Board of Commissioners. Here I call the meeting to order. Chairman of the Board.
Chairman of the Board.
President.
Commissioner Blakeyman.
President.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
President.
If we could all stand. We have a duty to the people. But we need to just sit in the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Next, I think, Commissioners, is approval of the agenda. Move to approve.
A second.
Motion, a second, to approve the agenda for the May 2nd special meeting, Towns County Board of Commissioners, Chair Humber.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakeyman.
Yes.
Chairman of the Board.
Yes. Item 5, a presentation that is a discussion and possible action regarding financing options for the Education Grocer seats tax bond. Mr. Humber.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'll just do a quick intro and then turn it over to Mr. Eric Herring. There are three options for you to be able to explore today. He will go ahead and present that. It gives some flexibility in terms of timing as well as interest savings. So I'm very pleased, but I want to thank RBC for the hard work and the short amount of time to get us these numbers today and to provide options to the board so that you can really see what is out there. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman and the Commission.
Mr. Humber, Eric Herring with RBC Capital Markets. You should have a presentation in front of you. I'll walk through that, kind of walk through a little bit of history, if you will, and then where we are today and what the options are going forward and the difference between those options and ultimately how much money is able to go to the other schools and to U&amp;M branch. So in January 1 of 2013, voters authorized a 50 cent educational grocery seats tax. The revenues from those GRT are restricted to the payment of debt service only or repayment of debt. It can be used on a pay-as-you-go basis, if you will. The proceeds from those grocery seats tax bonds shall be dedicated to the public school capital projects and off-campus instruction program capital projects. The imposition of the grocery seats tax, as it says in the law, it says for a period necessary for the payment of debt, but shall not exceed 10-year imposition. So the county's educational GRT will expire on January 1 of 2023. As it is right now, we'll kind of, we'll talk about sort of the redemptions that have been happening and the possibility for the addition of new debt. So in 2013, the county issued 22 million of educational grocery seats tax bonds. Since then, due to the excess revenues that the county has received in those educational grocery seats taxes, the county's been able to redeem 5.26 million of the original 22 million. So that leaves 6.4 million of educational grocery seats tax bonds that are currently outstanding. The county, there is an additional bonds test and it requires that to issue new bonds, the existing and the new debt cannot, the educational grocery seats tax revenues cannot be less than 115% of that total combined debt service. And the goal here is to try to maximize the number of dollars that we can generate today to the schools and to U&amp;M. So on page 2 of the presentation, we took a look at the history of the grocery seats tax here for the educational GRT. And over the last few years, the grocery seats tax has risen. In 2015, it was 3.48. In 2017, it was 3.93. However, if we, as we take a look at what grocery seats tax collections have done year to date, the county's down about 7%, a little over 7%. So if we project that forward, we're looking at about, so through this time, last year, the county collected about 3.3 million. And right now, the county is right at 3 million. So if we project that out for the rest of the fiscal year, we're looking at about 3.69 million, down from 3.93 million. So that's an important factor when we, when we look at what revenue target should be and in terms of structuring these, in terms of structuring these bonds. We don't want to get too aggressive to the point where we don't have sufficient revenues to actually pay the debt service on the bonds.
And I think we all know that '16 and '17 were kind of anomaly because of the construction at the Ski Valley and what was going on with the remediation of Questa. So those two years hardly showed a greater proceeds because of that construction and everything else that was going on with the county, but we don't have those.
That's correct. And for 2018, well, what we're seeing in 2018 is more realistic of what the long-term sustainability of those grocery seats tax revenues will be and really recurring sort of non-construction, non-construction revenues.
So '14, '15, and '18 years would be a better average, giving those two five years?
That's, that's correct. And when, and when we look at that, that average is about 3.6 million. So on page, on page.
What would be the consequences if you fell below 115? I know it's not likely 115%.
So the requirement is that at the time that you issue the bonds, you have to meet the 115 requirement.
After that, you just have to make payments.
After that, if it drops below that, you're just making your payments, but you would not be able to issue any additional, any additional debt. The only repayment source and security for these bonds, though, is the educational grocery seats tax revenues. So on page 3, this is, this is the 2013 bonds as they are outstanding right now with the redemptions that I talked about earlier. And originally, this was set to mature in April of 2023. And because of those redemptions, it will expire, the debt service will expire in 2021. But effectively, due to the annual debt service and the revenues that are being generated, this debt will be extinguished by 2020. If no additional debt is issued, under state law, that grocery seats tax would effectively expire. So this is where the opportunity to issue additional debt and generate additional money for public schools and U&amp;M comes into play. So if you take a look at page 4, this is a sample of the educational GRT debt issuance. You'll see that the debt is backloaded. Again, this is to take advantage of the prepayments that have occurred. So that if you look going over the EGT revenues, 3.6 million, the total combined debt service has covered right at 1.15 and still has about 480,000 of excess revenues that are being generated annually. Now, those excess revenues go into a redemption fund and annually, those bonds are redeemed. Your current bonds and as we kind of go through these, have an extraordinary mandatory redemption feature. So every year, that money has to be used to redeem, has to be used to redeem bonds. So based upon, based upon this number, the net proceeds, this is going to match proceeds that could be generated, and this is going to fluctuate based upon where interest rates go, is about $8.2 million. That would be divided percentage-wise amongst the, amongst the various public education institutions. This would also generate, this also provides about $2.3 million of revenue that's over and above the annual revenue over the next five years, over and above what the county would receive from this financing. So that would be potential additional sources of capital for schools. Now, that's, now that's subject to where, you know, interest rates are in the future, but as you redeem, as the county redeems bonds with this excess revenue, you're going to be in the same place, you're going to shorten up debt. And so two, three years from now, the county's going to have the, another ability to go out and do a very short-term borrowing to effectively turn those, that revenue into capital dollars for the public education.
And by maybe in short term, that's a different kind of bonds, basically like Jeff Barnes described to me?
What's that?
Spud's law.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's exactly right. And in that particular case, you're issuing very short-term bonds. You can place them like, for example, to the state treasurer. They don't charge anything, you know, just their, just their cost of interest. And it's very efficient, very quick.
And the only reason I ask is so you can get this done again in 2023. I don't know if bonds can stick longer, and if you couldn't do it until that was all approved, right?
Well, as, as those redemptions come in, we anticipate that you'll probably be able to do another short-term borrowing in 2022, in 2022. You will have.
And will it delay reissuance of the EG?
It won't delay reissuance of the EGT. This is not, this is not my expertise here, but, you know, I think state law has to be amended to allow for this to be sent back to voters in 2023 to reauthorize the grocery seats tax if so desired. But that, that's a little bit outside of my scope of expertise in terms of what, what would have to be done so that could happen.
And as I told Mario, I'd like to start that process earlier, like in 2020. That way, in case it fails, we start earlier to try to just, we use that strategy of the new bonds. Hopefully it works, but.
Thanks, Chairman. Yeah, I guess, so the bonds, expiration date of the bonds is January 1st, 2023, but with the excess GRTs going into redemption, when would it end, when might it end, based on your assumptions of 2.3 million? So it would be like 2022, and that's when you're talking about the issuance of a short-term bond?
That, that's correct. So in 2022 or maybe in early 2023, that's when we would be looking at a very short, you know, short-term, basically like a month, you know, a note that was about a month long, you just solid out that revenue, turn it into capital for the public, for the public institutions to be used.
And those, upon expiration, the tax expires also, right?
That, that's correct. Once the, so the tax expires at the shorter of when there's no longer debt outstanding or 10 years. So once that debt gets, gets fully paid off or redeemed, then the tax automatically expires.
So the legislators have to plan for a 2023 transition and go to the legislature and then pass and then vote. And then obviously, they have to start that much sooner to get it all done so that we can keep the tax in the community. And within that bill would be designation of who would be, what entity would be able to enjoy the proceeds from that. That would be part of the legislative action. It would be designated, whether it's going to be hospitals, schools, or whatever.
Right, so let me have Chris, Chris Neerhead from the Montalaw Firm. He's got some good information on that.
Good morning, everyone. Chris Neerhead, Mr. Allsitt, Partner in Montalaw Firm. Excellent bank of jobs, nailed everything right. I just want to clarify one thing on the legislative part. If you want to keep the EGT going forward past 2023, when the legislation was amended in 2012, 2013, it provided the commission, the authority at, at working collaboratively with the schools to send it back to the voters without additional legislative action. So that's only a vote in 2012, 2022 or 2023. If, back your question, Commissioner, if there wasn't a question about changing its purpose and intent, that wouldn't be a vote back to the legislature. So that's an important distinction there, but the EGT would not be that.
So there's a potential automatic renewal based on a county vote?
Yeah, it would be automatic. It would be, the commission needs to take action at the direction, it's, it follows the same statutory requirements. The school districts would collaborate, decide that between the Yasko quest, the Tows and U&amp;M, the Tows. They want to request that the tax plates, that they would come to you as the governing body with the joint resolution, asking you to pass an ordinance, putting it on the ballot. At that point, you would do that, and then it's back to where it was in 2012, 2013, and 2002 and 2003. The county constituents, everyone in the county would have an opportunity to vote on that. Thank you.
So going on to the, going on to the next page, we took a look at effectively the three financing options that are available to the county. We looked at New Mexico Finance Authority placement, we looked at public markets, and then we also looked at a bank placement. And just to kind of, just to sort of highlight, the all-in TIC, this is the all-in borrowing costs, all issuance costs associated with the transaction to the county. For the New Mexico Finance Authority, it would be 2.65, 6%. For the public markets, it would be 3.13, 3%. And for bank placement, it would be 3.67%. We've also provided, we've also provided the detailed issuance costs for each of these, for each of these options. But really, when it comes, when it comes down to it, looking at the net proceeds for the project and evaluating what's, what generates the largest amount of proceeds, since the NMFA has the lowest interest rate, those proceeds are estimated to be about 8.24 billion for the public markets, about 8.11 million, and for a bank placement, about 7.96 million. Again, these numbers are going to change as interest rates fluctuate because our constraint really is the revenue. So as your interest cost goes up, the lower proceeds you get. If your interest cost goes down, your proceeds are going to go, are going to go up because that, that is, that is our constraint. We, so is, are there any questions on this page? No. So going on to, I thought it would also, while we talk about the numbers, it's also important to talk about sort of the considerations for each, each of these, each of these types of financings. From the NMFA, and as, as the county is well-versed in NFA transactions, the funds are available to the county and to the public education entities through a requisition process. It's a, it's a pretty, it's a pretty easy process in terms of sending them the invoice and getting, and getting the money. The NMFA board approval is required in addition to the county commission approval of the financing. The NMFA typically has lower issuance costs since there's not a bond rating, an official statement, it does not have to be prepared. But the NMFA placement fee is typically high, higher than a, than a, than an underwriter charges in a public market. It's $7.50 per bond and up to 7.5 million, and then $3.5 per bond, over 7.5 million. But generally speaking, lower interest rates for less than double rate of credit. It may require a debt service reserve fund, which may be able to be satisfied with a bond, a surety reserve similar to what the, excuse me, what the county just did in its refunding. And in fact, we did reach out to Build and Parent Mutual, who insured your 2013 transaction, and they felt they would, they would be comfortable doing a surety reserve for this transaction if it went to the New Mexico Finance Authority. We have had those conversations with them. On the public marketing, on public marketing, the project proceeds are, on the day of closing, they're delivered to the county. There is no requisition process. There's no, there's no real approval process outside of the county commission approval of the financing. There are certain rules that are required, such as bond insurance and surety reserve approvals that are required, as well as the bond ratings. Those aren't really approvals, those are just, those are ratings that are applied to the, to the bond transaction. They typically come with higher issuance costs, as I mentioned, with the preparation of official statement, being the bond rating. But the underwriter costs are typically, are typically lower. The underlying bonds are currently rated triple B. We expect that they will continue to be rated triple B. So just from a rating standpoint, it goes triple A, double A, A, and then triple B. And that's where those bonds are rated. And they would, they would be sold with bond insurance, which, which comes with a, basically a double A insured rating, but does not trade at, you know, a natural triple A, I mean, a natural double A rated credit. Similar to the New Mexico Finance Authority, it would, however, it would require a reserve fund. This could be met with a surety reserve as well. And then from a bank placement, similar to a public financing, all project proceeds are delivered at closing. There's internal credit approval that the bank has to go through prior to providing, and then of course, the county commission approval. Typically lower issuance costs, the bank has typically very minimal costs, several thousand dollars for their internal counsel to review the documents. Bank fee is, is very low, and the rate can, will be locked in typically, you know, 30 to 45 days prior to closing. So it does help mitigate, you know, some interest rate risk. And, but no reserve fund would be required. Bank placements typically don't require that. But the biggest consideration that typically comes with a higher borrowing rate than the public markets with the New Mexico Finance Authority. Prior to this year, banks were more competitive because of tax reform with the corporate tax rate going from 35% to 21%. Banks are experiencing the same thing, so they're having to adjust their pricing on municipal bonds because they can't take advantage as good, as much as advantage of the tax exemption as they have in the past. And we also have some, some information on the, on the market over the last couple of pages, pages, but I will stop there and field any additional questions that you all have.
Mr. Chairman.
So why are these bonds rated triple B instead of triple A?
Well, the, so these bonds are rated triple B for several reasons. They, they look at the overall economy, they look at wealth levels, they look at the coverage because this is, because the coverage levels are very thin at 1.15 and, and designed to generate the maximum amount of proceeds to the, to the public, public education institutions. That is the reason that the, that the bonds are rated triple B. The other thing also is, is that, you know, the, the county's finances have improved since 2013. But, you know, I would say that the, you know, that when they take all of those things into consideration, it is, we expect that it will continue to be rated at the triple B level. Maybe up a little bit, but, but not much.
What would take to bring it up to triple A rating?
That, that would be unlikely. There are very, very few natural triple A rated issuers. And Burnalee County is, and Santa Fe County are the only two counties in New Mexico that are rated triple A. And that's because they have significant tax bases and they also have significant reserves.
I just thought we, we went through more than NMFA and NMFA that we would get that higher bond rating?
So that's a good question. So, so the benefit of the New Mexico Finance Authority, they, they are rated triple A, double A plus by Hoos and Standard. Sorry, triple A by Standard Poor's, double A one by Hoos. And you get the benefit of that rating. So they, so they have, they basically go out into the market, they borrow, and then turn around and lend those funds out to their underlying borrowers. So you're taking advantage of their rating. If you were to go to the public markets without going to the New Mexico Finance Authority, your underlying bonds would be rated, you know, triple B. And that's one, and that's the reason that the, the interest rate difference is about 70 basis points between going to the public markets versus going to the New Mexico Finance Authority. On that, on that page where we compare, the interest rate's 2.65 or 3.13%.
And the resolution states 10 million, but it's 8.2. But are you, is that the discrepancy because of the extra GRTs that come in at 2 million? I mean, how does, how does that work?
So the 10 million is really an up-to amount. Not, not that we think that we're going to actually get up to 10 million, but we want to try to provide the maximum amount of flexibility to the county to be able to issue the maximum amount that the revenues and the interest rate will allow. So it's really an exceed-to amount. But the anticipation is, is that if you sold these bonds today, the par amount would be about 8.4 million. And the net proceeds would be about 8.3 million.
Maybe boost the GRTs there. That's the backside.
And is the NMFA locked in interest rate, or you said it fluctuates?
So the New Mexico Finance Authority, they said their interest rates weekly on Monday based upon the actions of the, of the market prior to week. But once, once the, once the pricing is locked in, that pricing is fixed for the term of the, of the transaction, so it will not fluctuate. On all of these, on all of these options that I showed you, they're, they all perform that same way. Interest rates are locked in, they're locked in for the remaining five years through 2022.
What's the current interest rate right now?
For the New Mexico Finance Authority, about 2.65%. For the public markets, about 3.13%.
And is there a timing issue as far as getting the best rate? If we go with NMFA, like, is it likely that this 2.65 might go down or might go up? And what are we talking about, 30 days to lock that in?
If we knew, we could get really rich.
Yeah. We're talking about, what, 30 days to lock this in or 60? I'm just wondering, what do you, you know, is it possible that it would go lower or would it go higher?
Well, there, there's the possibility of both. There, it's, it's unlikely that it's going to really go down much lower. The reason is, is that the Federal Reserve over the last year has raised rates, overnight lending rates, four times. And short-term, short-term rates are really based upon what that overnight lending rate that the, that the Federal Reserve sets. Long-term rates, 10 years now, those are more a reflection of the long-term inflation expectation. So you, you might see rates dip a little bit if, if we saw. So you might see rates dip a little bit if we saw a rally in interest rates. I don't expect them to dip much more. We could see, excuse me, we could see those rates go up, the short-term rates go up if there is fear that the Federal Reserve might raise rates again. But I will say that, and I think there's a couple of documents that are in front of you today for consideration, that if the county were to act on those today, then regardless of which method you choose, public market or the New Mexico Finance Authority, we would more than likely have final interest rates for the commission to approve in the early to mid-June timeframe. And then closing would occur thirty days after. But once you lock in those interest rates, you're locked in. Closing is just when money transfers or when money becomes available.
I'm just curious, it's something to check on what our schools think. But why show us these three alternatives or possibilities when it looks like MMFA is the best way to go? I mean, why show us these options?
Well, I think just for total transparency, we give all the options as a public body to make the most informed decision. There are obviously some considerations when looking at, as I walked through on those considerations from the New Mexico Finance Authority for public markets, there are some minute issues, if you will, and differences from the approval process. So we wanted to just make sure that you all were aware of what procedures are required and what options are available. And our goal is to make sure that not only on this transaction, but any transaction that the county does, that you're informed of all of your options.
All right. Any questions from the school administrators?
Go ahead, come forward.
Good morning, Commissioner. Just a quick question, actually, just for clarification's sake. I'm not CFO of my campus, but in terms of the rates right here, we have, they're the asked on page five. I noticed that one, the NMFA rate was at 4.16218. And then the public market rate, 4.20218. And the county rate was at 4.20219, which is very difficult. But I'm just wondering, is there a difference in the premiums? Are the interest rates based on that four days from the market to shift? So I just wanted to make sure we're looking at comparative analysis that I'm not misinterpreting the reading.
That's a great question. So the reason that we have the 4.16 and the 4.20 is that earlier, when I mentioned that the interest rates for the NMFA get set weekly. When we did our announcement, when we were here at the last meeting and we were asked to evaluate this, we took the interest rates from NMFA that Monday versus the interest rates in the public markets two days after the prior county commission meeting. So that's the difference. The difference in those rates really aren't that significant. Again, because short-term rates, and because this is only a five-year borrowing, short-term rates are really, they're really set based upon what the Federal Reserve actions are. Yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. Commissioner, I just want to point out one thing. Page four, we have a rough idea there of what rates is costing. I just wanted the board to understand the comparison we're making. We provided that worst case bond. That interest, the thing of the objective is about 1.58000 versus the 624,000. So I think either choice you make, that is the options you have, you're going to save a significant amount of interest dollars for the taxpayers. So I just wanted to point that out because I think that's quite the most significant. Of the savings that we're going to experience by taking any of these three options.
How much savings?
Nine and a half months.
Over the five years? And then how does that work, the bonds, once they're sold? The full amount is immediately available to the schools or is that spread out?
So that's a good question. So through the public markets, money is delivered to the county on the day of closing and those funds can be sent out to the public education entities. To the New Mexico Finance Authority, they have a requisition process. And so in this particular case, school districts would request monies from the county. The county would then send that requisition to the finance authority. And finance authority can, that same day, wire funds either to the county or to the school entity.
So what are the disadvantages and advantages with those two funding mechanisms? And how the funds are distributed?
Well, the disadvantages, I would say, from the New Mexico Finance Authority process is that there may be a slight time delay from when the money is needed to when you receive the money. And you could be talking several days type of a thing. The school districts, U and M, would obviously want to have the projects laid out before the county commission. Because regardless of whether you sell these to the public markets or you sell these through the New Mexico Finance Authority, you've got a three-year window in which to expend this money. And/or the county would be subject to arbitrage rebate on those funds. So to a certain extent, there is, through the New Mexico Finance Authority, through the requisition process, they keep very detailed records of those requisitions so that they can meet the IRS requirements for those spending, for the spend downs. From the public marketing side, while you receive those monies upfront and you're able to distribute those immediately, you'll also receive less money too than through the New Mexico Finance Authority. The other thing too, also, through the New Mexico Finance Authority, they'll win the, when the county submits the application, they'll want to look at what the projects that the money is being spent on.
So there's more accounting from NMFA? Maybe the delay, you said several days, is that accurate? Is it more like a month or two?
No, it's not. I mean, I can, manager could probably answer that better than I can.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner McDonald, in my experience, it's never been more than a couple days. I think the treasurer staff that appear can kind of help attest that. But for the most part, we don't, we have the ability to submit a vendor's invoice directly. NMFA can pay that vendor directly. We've never had any concern with the vendors saying they haven't received a payment.
So we would not, and see the money, we would make the requisition and it would go immediately to the school?
That's how some of our transactions would work. If we could work that out with the schools, that would probably be the easiest, quickest way. So nobody has to front any cash. The requisition would be attached to an invoice. The invoice would be paid directly. It's never been more than a few days, in my recollection. If I'm wrong, the treasurer should be correct. But it's never been more than a couple days.
And the public market is lower because of the higher interest rate?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner, what?
So do you say that all of the proceeds have to be spent within three years?
Well, I'll let the experts tell you the exact requirements. It's not quite 100%, but...
Chris, thanks for the question, Commissioner. The standard under the IRS, and anytime you borrow tax exempt money, you're getting these lower interest rates because they're subsidized by the federal government by foregoing interest that they earn. So the IRS has all kinds of rules and regulations to make sure there's not an abuse of that process and that the funds are not just borrowed and then not used quickly or invested for profit or different things. So the rules under the IRS code require that at the time you issue the debt, that the school districts have a reasonable expectation. So that's the standard, that they have a reasonable expectation that yes, we're going to get my proportion or there's a proportion of the proceeds. And at that time, they have a reasonable expectation that they'll expend eighty-five percent of that money within the three-year period. Now, it happens that we have clients that run into issues with either construction or other things, that they don't spend it in three years. The response is you just need to document that and be able to respond to an IRS inquiry saying, why haven't you spent it? And generally, there's always a reason that is justified. So things change, but at the time of issuance, you have a reasonable expectation to spend eighty-five percent within three years and five percent within six months. Generally, that five percent is never an issue. You have a lot of planning and construction things going on. But those are the two primary hurdles that generally aren't problem.
Yeah, the purpose of the question was the consequence if it hasn't happened. Because I know how construction projects can be, so...
Right. And so there's latitude. And again, the important thing with the IRS is documenting everything that's happening and that ties back to their comment about whether you use the NMFA or private bank, you are being very clear about where these ventures are going.
So we're going to hear a recommendation from our manager and our CEO? Mr. Spuzzel?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. The commission is so interested, we could present some of the projects that are being planned in a couple of years. Do you want to hear that?
Sure.
But I want to make sure that, how does the funding formula work? Is it distributed based on population of the schools and U and M? Or how is that funding?
It was in the original legislation, it was changed possibly in school. Taos for municipal schools gets 58.01%. National schools get 7.77%. Quest independent schools gets 9.14%. And U and M gets 25%.
So the way that works excellent is, under the statute, U and M, Taos does get 25%. Then the remainder is distributed proportionally based on student population as a proportion of the county population. And then you determine, so the bigger schools are going to get that. The only thing I wanted to add to whatever's talking about, Commissioner, we're talking about information and up to the ten million. This is a preliminary step. It's important to give Mr. Portman a direction about what to do and move forward. But that it is still the most significant steps for you as a commission to come up at the ordinance stage. And at that point, everything is laid out. You'll have a very clear idea of what is happening. So this morning, don't feel like I got to make a decision based on a parameter clear up here. You'll have a much clearer definition of the pricing at that point. So I just want to throw that in so you aren't unsure about that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Thank you for your consideration. Hopefully, you've enabled consideration of the proposed funding. I just want to say that the educational grocery seed stack has been invaluable to NMTAOS as far as developing and building new campuses. We've had the funds available from the new issue of the EGRT 2013. And with those funds, we've been able to leverage some general obligation bonds to help us with building a couple of big buildings of the Crowe campus. With the renovation of Javi Martinez Hall, which is one of the oldest buildings of the Crowe campus. We've actually also renovated the old Rio Grande Tom Hall building downtown. As you see, it's kind of a, now kind of a landmark building and it's being used for health career training. And it actually serves to train our nursing program, CNAs, massage therapy, and other careers related in health, which is actually a needed profession in Taos. And with the new funds that they become available, we actually plan to do some extensive renovations and repairs of the Crowe campus. We certainly have a number of those buildings in particular, like Fred Rock Hall, the meeting and the new roof. We've done a number of patches over the years, but I think it's time to actually replace the entire roof. We have, with security being an issue these days, we have plans to perhaps install additional lighting and security cameras and a notification system for the campus. We also plan to do some improvements to our Pitts campus, which currently serves about fifty families in the Taos area. And we'd like to make that facility, certainly a Triple A facility. Also landscaping, since the area is relatively new, we need to provide some additional projects that address drainage, landscaping, parking lots, and also dealing with drainage issues. And all these previous projects, really, we try to encourage contractors that we eventually listed to use local, local, local. We've used Peds Mechanical, Gecko Landscaping, and S Company. So a lot of these funds we use do go back and benefit the community, but provide us some jobs. I stand for questions.
Commissioner?
Given a theoretical scenario, once we move out of the senior center, let's just say the town would give the building to U and M, senior center. Do you have any plans to renovate that for daycare or is that...
Commissioner, that's our yard, it's no longer the town.
Okay, so then if we gave it to U and M for daycare, would you be able to spend some of the bond money on renovation for daycare?
We can spend capital monies on buildings that actually are owned by U and M. If they're leased, there's a possibility we can do some of these whole improvements to renovate the building for its dedication purposes. So it is possible to use some of those funds for that.
And what was the funding used for the first bond? Was it NMFA or was it public market or...?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McDonald, we went out to the public market. We went through the whole ratings process. SMP did the whole questionnaire for us and they continue to update our bond rating. We just received back, I think, a mandatory, we updated Triple B, strong Triple B. And that's about the best we could hope for. Basically, SMP did tell me we're just too small to ever anticipate going higher than that. We don't have the revenue to be able to compete at that higher level in the San Antonio area.
And do we know if all the various schools have expended the past amount of bond money?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner McDonald, I believe at that time, we just issued the entire amount. I can recall that they did a requisition process at that time of the trip here and off, but I believe that was, most of their money had been expended. I think it's been up to them and I don't know if we have any... There's still some, so we're still holding a little bit of that money from the original issue.
And is there that window, for you window?
It's different because that was a placement where proceeds were given to us upfront. I know that it was noted as a disadvantage to NMFA because of the couple of days of potential lag. But I see that as an advantage to the reporting that they provide us. The fact that they really keep us out of trouble with the IRS with the reporting they do and the way they keep track of that money for us. So I think it would also be a vengeful to the schools in this case. And you don't have to do the extra work tracking and ensure your reporting, all of the proper proceeds to the IRS.
So then, let's say there's some leftover money from the previous bond issue. Does that have to be expended before the end of this fiscal year? Before these bond, new... that have to be expended before the end of this fiscal year, before these bond, new bonds are released, or how, how does that work?
I, I don't know exactly, I'm not, I think you would prefer to spend, well, sorry, you can sit in there for a few years, spend that out, and then the new proceeds would be available to them when they need it. But I don't, I honestly don't know how much is left in their funds. I think for the most part, they've expended a lot of that money, which applies some residual balance.
Yes, Commissioner Adano, I just answered your question. Mr. Chairman, these funds are required by statute, you need to spend about 85% of those funds within about a three or four-year period.
Can you carry over the rest, or not, or just keep it in, in account, in the treasurer's account, this last bond?
I'm sorry, can you clarify your question?
Well, I think Mr. Hughes can answer that. If you still have money from the previous bond, imagine that just carries over, and if there's no regulation, it has to be paid, spent 100% before the new bonds are issued.
I believe that's correct, because you don't have to return the bond. Our treasurer's wired to the new issue. You manage it perfectly.
No, that's okay. So you don't hear the House County Treasurer, Paula, when my assistant went to go and get the report, that will indicate exactly what the balances are, or the policies from that one.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Adano, we potentially could have run the risk of arbitrage, like Mr. Eric had mentioned, but we've not invested that money, so that money hasn't earned anything for us to be at risk of having to return any proceeds based on the balance tax of arbitrage, which definitely is, and so we don't, we don't play any arbitrage markets. That money's been sitting there waiting for the schools to need it, and they've been using it. I feel like they're probably back to that 85% one, so whatever's sitting there's probably not much.
And just to directly, I can answer, the monies would still be available for projects, and if something hit on the head, you could use those and then the new monies, it wouldn't prevent you, Commissioner, if you had a, if you had a reasonable expectation to be at these projects, and these summers have been excellent, they're all dead on, but to directly answer that, it's still there for the projects.
Thank you.
Anything else? That's it? All right, anyone thank the commission for the support? Any other questions?
The balances for the, for the bond proceeds are U&amp;M Taos, 2.6 million, Red River, 34,000, Penasco, 530,000. Again, there's bond balances, 21 cents, $28 for Vista Grande and Taos Arts, and then the Taos Academy, $1,000.
Say again, how much? I didn't catch, 2,000?
Again, for the Taos Academy, $1,000, $11.74. I'm just rounding off the numbers, but for a total of 3.2 million in bond proceeds left from this.
About what total bond? 10? 22. 22, okay.
But U&amp;M Taos is 2,644,914.23.
Say that again, please.
But so, so U&amp;M is gonna have like four and a half million? Not four and a half, 4.8.
Chairman, Commissioner, so we have about 2.6 million, remember that when we, so we operate through the U&amp;M system, through the state, whenever we have new buildings that are gonna come online, we have GeoBond that's being built right now, it's a standard building. We have to throw about 25% of those monies in order to be able to cover the cost for that building, so to find a name out of building, we have to go home and buy, we use ETRT monies to pay care. We have GeoBond that's going to be about $1,000 again for next year or this year, that's another member, that's another 4.2 million dollar project that we put into building out at Clower, so that we can create more campus, so when we're putting out there, we'll have to throw about 1.25 million dollars. In addition to that, we have on the counter, I'll just, that Mario and Shwazal just discussed, it's about $2 million worth of projects. So we, we have to have a greater reserve because of those new buildings that we wanna bring online. If not, we do GeoBond approval, and we have no money, no ready, we just be able to match debt, we'll do provide a 25%. So it may look like we, we have it, but it's, it's in many ways already in cover.
Do you have any plans to do housing out there for students?
None at the moment. Okay. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, it's very good, if you want a recommendation, as the county would recommend, that we would look at NMFA, see if we could get into that process. It is the lowest interest rate, the greatest amount, principal amount for the schools to split, and it's also a lower cost of issuance as compared to the public market. So as manager, I would recommend that, I would respectfully request in a motion that you give the chairman the ability to sign a paperwork to keep the process moving. I think we would probably be able to get in front of the finance authority now in May, and so if that worked out, that gets our timeframe, basically what we've been talking about all along, July, mid-July, late, or early August, the latest to have the proceeds available to schools. So with that, would we need a motion, first to approve resolution 2018? I would ask first for a motion to give me the direction on the presentation, and the ability to make a decision on the presentation. So I would ask if by the presentation, you choose NMFA, and give me that group resolution, that we don't, that's the decision we're made, and then the 10th resolution would be a separate item, I think that gets us moving along, if any path you take, the 10th resolution would be necessary.
Pleasure, Commissioner. Well, assuming that the schools don't have any objection to NMFA, I'll, I'll make a motion that we pursue the NMFA group.
Second.
A motion of second to proceed with the ETRT issuance, with the model being through NMFA, New Mexico Finance Authority. Further discussion? Court call roll.
Commissioner Adano?
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes. I'm making a motion to approve resolution 2018-29, and give the chairman the authority to sign paperwork to keep the process moving.
Second.
Motion of second to approve resolution 2018-29, declaring the intent of the board funding commissions to consider the adoption of the ordinance issuance and scale up to 10 million dollars. County and Taos Education Gross Receipts Tax Improvement Revenue Bonds, and to give the chairman the authority to sign things as needed to keep to speed up the process. Court call roll.
Commissioner Adano?
Yes.
Mr. Blake.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes. There we go.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, motion adjourned. Thank you, thank you all, thank you for our children. Motion to adjourn, and.